Okay, looks like we're ready to go. So we'll call to order the August 10th, 2015 meeting of the Salina City Commission, and we'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, at this time, I would ask all who are able to please stand and join us in the pluggable agents, and follow that with a moment of silence.
My pluggable agents should apply the United States of America and the Constitution for which it stands, by nature, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and sorrow.
Okay, we have no awards and proclamations today, so we'll move right into the citizens' forum, and this is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak about any item that is not on today's agenda, and we ask that you just limit your comments to five minutes or less, and that you state your name and address. So, welcome anybody to the podium at this time that wishes to speak. Okay, we have no citizen comment at this time, so we'll move into the public hearing portion and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Proposed 2016 Budget. 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 15-10792, Adopting the Budget.
Okay, thank you. We will open this public hearing at this time and receive a staff report from Mr. Franz.
According to State Statute, public hearings are required to be held on proposed budget with ten days' published notice prior to the hearing. We have published notice of the hearing. Partially in the interest of citizen engagement, we've actually scheduled two hearings or two hearing times this year, once at this meeting in conjunction with the first reading of the ordinance, and then once at the meeting next week in conjunction with final adoption. So, there'll be two opportunities to be heard formally. Final proposed budget includes the total expenditures excluding the interfund transactions and reserves totaling $72,514,948 for 2016. That compares to the amount last year of $71,999,570. The proposed property tax levy is at 27.080 mils, 27.08 mils, the same as the final tax levy for 2015, and slightly increased from the 26.927 mils levy for 2014. Property values this year have shown a modest growth of 2.03 percent. Of this amount existing property grew by 1.4 percent, with the value of new development adding the remaining 0.83 percent. Delinquency rates are slightly lower than last year's rate of 1.23 percent. This year, they're at 1.13 percent. Sales taxes have resumed a small growth rate on the order of 3.1 percent compared to 2014. That's not enough to offset growth pressure on expenditures as well as provide resources to reestablish reserves at targeted levels. Sales and property taxes provide 35 percent of the total city revenues and 66 percent of the general operations and debt service revenues. City Commission may select a levy amount up to but not exceeding the published number of $11,142,663. I've included a table in the blue sheet showing the effects of that change, and tried to translate that to a $100,000 property to make it easy for somebody to assess what effect it may have on them. In 2015 compared to 2014, the annual change was about $15.30. For 2016, it would be zero, presuming the property stayed valued at $100,000. Of course, generally, there's a little bit of inflation there, and if you use the 1.4 percent as a guideline, then the property for a particular property at that value would increase by $4.54. Money markets have not returned to the historic norms after the 2008 recession. Interest rates on investments remain very low. They used to be a fairly significant revenue source; now they're less so. In 2008, they produced about 673,000. We expect about 100,000 for 2016. Personal property values continue to decline as a result of exempting business machinery and equipment from personal property taxation. Those values have fallen from $39,528,000 for Budget 2007 to $11,757,000 for Budget 2016. This is a component of the overall property valuation, so part of that property valuation growth is moderated by this decline. Through the last several years of fiscal challenges, one of our strategies for minimizing service impacts of the recession was a major drawdown of fund reserves, particularly in the general fund. As the economy gradually improved, restoration of those balances to an appropriate level should remain a priority. In 2015 and 2016, we were projecting to move further in that direction, and we anticipate at the close of 2016, a general fund balance on the order of $3,690,000, which is a significant improvement over the close of 2013, but still short of the $5 million balance targeted. Retirement system cost growth has moderated in 2016 with rates declining very slightly, and this does provide us kind of an immediate respite for that year, but we really expect continued upward pressure on that cost element. Authorized staffing remains stable at 473 authorized full-time projections. Salary projections now assume stable turnover and vacancies levels. Those are higher than the historical norm. However, we see nothing in the immediate future that will change that. Allowances have been made in the projections to accommodate normal merit adjustments, as well as, now after the discussion today, a 2.5 percent general plan adjustment. The plan has not been adjusted in a general way since 2008. Comprehensive fee schedule has been reviewed and will be adjusted modestly to accommodate cost pressures. Sanitation fees are proposed to be increased from $13.90 a month to $14.17 per month. Solid waste fees will be increased from $31.40 to $32.34 per ton. Adjustments to water and wastewater and golf course rates will be deferred until later in the year when we know a little bit more about the fiscal performance of those operations through the higher-volume portions of this year. We will be reviewing utility franchise fees. Budget is presented in contemplates increasing those from 5 to 6 percent. However, that is subject to discussion with the utility providers, and if that should occur, it will produce a revenue impact of about $800,000 in the first year. Continued reliance on tax stabilizations from special sales tax funds to the general fund remains at $360,000. Anticipate maintenance of existing service levels with a few exceptions. Investment in street rehabilitation and maintenance is reduced slightly in the gas tax fund to better match resources available and to recover a working fund balance. However, between gas tax and special sales tax, the city will continue to invest significant resources of about $2,421,000 in maintenance and care of the transportation infrastructure. By comparison, that's about $300,000 less than what we anticipate doing in 2015. Proposed budget provides funding required to support a fifth route on the City Go Transit System, as well as restoring full funding to the Lee District, including resources to continue the development incentive program. At this point, I think I'll stand down. There are two actions required today. First is to open the floor for comments from the public on the proposed budget, and then at that point, the public hearing needs to be continued to August 17th, 2015, at 4:00 PM. Just so you know, the public notice did reference both dates and times, so the public has been noticed that there will be two occasions in which they may speak. Second item is to consider Ordinance Number 1510792 on first reading, and then it would then be considered as for final passage, the regular commission meeting on August 18th, along with other legislative actions, including a comprehensive fee schedule and pay plan adoption. And at that point, I would stand for questions, and then I will stand down for public comment.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, and do we have questions for staff at this time? And I'll just let the folks at home know that we've been talking about this in study session for hours and hours, so that we don't have questions now is because we've had rigorous discussions on this, and we appreciate the time you took to put this together. So, at this time, we will receive public comment during this public hearing. Okay, and seeing no public comment, we will bring it back. Oh, we do.
I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
My name is Karen Shade. I live at 111 Wisconsin. I've been much more interested in following the county processes and have watched their budget processes, and started to ask myself, what does it cost to provide law and order here in Saline County? And by that, I haven't used the word "law enforcement," because law enforcement often means the sheriff's department and police department, and has that reference. I wanted to include court costs. I wanted to include the cost of community corrections and true incarceration time, and was just trying to benchmark and put some figures together. So, I had the county's information. Rod Franz supplied some information for the city, and then I did some additional contacts to come up with county costs that included such things as Kansas Highway Patrol and Kansas Bureau of Investigation as well. And basically, what I -- there's always a hazard in me compiling information, but as best as I could prorate the state costs based on population to come up with a Saline County cost and add them to the known costs, I come up with it costing about $32 million to provide law enforcement or law and order services here in Saline County. And of course, as I boldly handed out information to all of you, I found a typo. I did some quick math. I think the total cost in the city is $181 per resident. I think the county cost is $153 per resident, and the state costs are coming in at $157.81 for a grand total of about $491 per resident. And I know there are some real gaps and limitations in what I put together here, so I'll be trying to correct those and come up with some more accurate figures. The one thing I was kind of interested in, the sheriff's office budget at $2,839,740 -- I said that wrong. It's hard to know if that duplicates any of the police services with the projected cost of $9,168,677. It's just one of the things I did was to come up, I divided the cost for the sheriff by the number of non-residents, and I ballparked their cost of providing services out of county at $359.05 for them. And then for the Saline Police Department, I divided their $9 million by 47,846 Salina residents to come up with an approximate cost of $197 a year. So, there seems to be some real differences between those populations. Some of it makes sense. The sheriff's office has to travel a great distance, and they've got a lot of travel time and mileage expense and all of that to get out for their service area. So, maybe things can be explained or not. These are just the things that I see, and I would urge the city and the county and appropriate state officials to talk about what the costs are, because when you do budgets based on historical spending, sometimes we forget to combine all partners together and look at what the true costs are. And at Mayor Blanchard's suggestion, I will be trying to look for base marks, but as a citizen, it's a little bit harder for me to try and find them. I heard you discussing earlier about attending state and national meetings. Those are probably where you'll find the true benchmarks, and we would, as citizens, would just rely on you all to help make sure total costs come in appropriately for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will just say to this, and maybe, Mr. Gage, you can respond if need be, but I think in a lot of those cases, I know our fire department, our fire administration, our police administration, and the city managers and that administration, as well as all of our departments across the board, I think, do a pretty good job and stay on top of best practices and are aware of what other, kind of what others, not only other cities are doing, but kind of how what we do interacts with what the county and the state does. And then just on, from a law and order, I think that would be a difficult, just to, just from our Salina Police Department standpoint, if you place a law and order dollar cost on the Salina Police Department, there are a lot of activities and things that the Salina Police Department does that might not fall into the category of law and order. We tend to look at when we're doing our budgets and so on, and I think staff looks at is our public safety component and what are the services we're providing, and how efficient are we in providing those services, and I think we get a lot of good feedback from citizens on the kind of job we're doing. So, I think moving forward, we are interested, and we're always interested in what everybody else is doing, because that does affect us, as we know. State budgets affect our city budget extensively, and so, we appreciate you putting that together and sharing it with us. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Okay, I see, okay, I see no other public comment. We'll bring it back for action to the commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we continue this August 17th, 2015, to August 17th, 2015 at 4:00 PM, the proposed budget hearing.
Second. Okay, I have a motion to second to approve on first reading, Ordinance Number 15-10792, Adopting the Budget.
Second. I'm sorry. Never mind.
That's all right. We'll second to second.
We seconded the second.
We're really confident about this budget. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes 5-0 as well. And we'll move to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, Approve the Minutes of August 3rd, 2015. Item 6.2, Consider Recommendations for Grant Fund Allocation to Local Agencies for the 2015 Kansas Emergency Solutions Grant. And Item 6.3, Approve Resolution Number 15-7243, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Webster Conference Center to Provide Sanitary Sewer Service to Buildings and Facilities Occupied by Webster Conference Center. And Approve Resolution Number 15-7244, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a License Agreement with Webster Conference Center, Authorizing a Private Sanitary Sewer Service Line to Be Installed in the Pleasant Hill Road Right-of-Way.
Okay, thank you. Are there any items a commissioner would like removed or amended from the consent agenda? Okay, entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 5-0. We'll move to administration.
Item 7.1, Second Reading, Ordinance Number 15-10789, Amending Salina Code Section 1-8 Pertaining to Prevailing Federal or State Law and Conflict Between Code Provisions and Repealing the Existing Section.
Okay, Ordinance Number 15-10789 was passed on first reading on August 3rd, 2015. Since that time, no comments have been received. So, at this time, we will take public comment if there is any public comment at this time. And seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption on second reading, Ordinance Number 15-10789, Amending Salina Code Section 1-8 Pertaining to Prevailing Federal or State Law and Conflict Between Code Provisions and Repealing the Existing Section.
Okay, I have a motion to second to adopt on second reading, Ordinance Number 15-10789, Amending Salina Code Section 1-8 Pertaining to Prevailing Federal or State Law and Conflict Between Code Provisions and Repealing the Existing Section. Second. Okay, I have a motion to second to adopt on second reading, Ordinance Number 15-10789. Any further comment? Seeing none, we'll get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Item 7.2, Second Reading, Ordinance Number 15-10790, Levying Special Assessments Against Certain Lots and Pieces of Property to Pay the Cost of Abatements of Nuisances.
Okay. Ordinance Number 15-10790 was passed on first reading on August 3rd, 2015. Since then, the report and ordinance have been modified to show payments received after July 30th, 2015. So, do we want to report for Mr. Hobbie on this, or does somebody have the changes on that? Oh, Mr. Franz, there we go. Shandy Wicks was on my blue sheet, so my apologies.
Yeah, okay. We have received one payment, approximately $150, I believe, since then.
Okay.
That's really the only update to give.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment at this time? And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I move that we adopt on second reading, Ordinance Number 15-10790, as amended.
Second. I have a motion to adopt on second reading, Ordinance Number 15-10790, as amended. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Oh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye. That passes 5-0.
Item 7.3, Second Reading, Ordinance Number 15-10791, Levying Special Assessments Against Certain Lots and Pieces of Property to Pay the Cost of the Repair of Sidewalks.
Okay. And Ordinance Number 15-10791 was passed on first reading on August 3rd, 2015. Since that time, no comments have been received, and do we have any public comment at this time? And seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption on second reading, Ordinance Number 15-10791, Levying Special Assessments Against Certain Lots and Pieces of Property to Pay the Cost of the Repair of Sidewalks.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second to adopt on second reading, Ordinance Number 15-10791. Any further discussion? And seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye. That passes 5-0.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 15-7268, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into An Agreement with Tria Health for Medical Therapy Management Effective October 1, 2015.
Okay, thank you, and we'll have a staff report from Natalie Fisher.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As explained in the background in my report, the City of Salina is self-funded, and we contract with our third-party administrator for different types of claims. One of those is prescription, and we've been monitoring some of the increase in price, as with all of our health claims, and we received a proposal from a company called Tria Health, and reviewed this proposal with our insurance consultant, Mr. Bob Charlesworth. Their approach is a circle-of-care model, and there are a variety of programs that happen within that. I've summarized those, but they include a pharmacy advocate program, a Tria Help Desk, med safety alerts, affordable med program, Tria clinic alerts, compliance alerts, and then also an optional program with tobacco cessation. We felt that it was an innovative approach. It delved into some of the data more than any of the programs that we had presented to us, and really, I think, provides a strategic approach to try to save some money and then also support individuals that may need the services that really aren't offered otherwise. Mr. Matt Bocky with Tria Health is here to answer any questions when I've presented my information and am finishing answering anything that I may be of assistance to do. But, the, I've summarized their approach, and really what it does, again, goes back to the data and looks for areas. How it was explained to me, I think, one of the biggest areas that it could target would be if individuals have those healthcare issues and they have different physicians prescribing different medications, they have the ability with their proprietary software to gather that data and look at it, and they obtain this data confidentially from our prescription benefit manager, MedTrack, that I'd mentioned early on. But they have the ability to grab that and then hone in on where there could be some problems and make sure they are what they consider a holistic approach to what they can do to support those individuals. And then some of the other programs, like the Help Desk, would be available to all of our individuals on the health plan, as well as dependents, children, spouses, whatnot. Quarterly reports would be provided to us so we could keep an eye on how effective the implementation and also the program would be moving forward. And then, from a fiscal point of view, we look that we are trending probably about $1 million this year into drug spend alone. They provided some, again, some data, identified 275 members, or 18 percent of our individuals that could be invited to participate in the advocate program. This would be a voluntary program. It's not anything we would be doing to our employees. It would be one more thing we offer to them to help them. We could incentivize it in different ways, align it with some wellness options, or just add it out there as a good benefit for individuals to take advantage of. The estimated expense would be about $40,000, and they have offered to go into a one-year contract to take a look at that. We originally thought we might be bringing some information back to you and postponing this, but they have agreed to look at an initial contract rather than a multi-year, and we would be looking at a one-year, and then revisit down the road to see what might be some different options and some different plans to move us forward and saving if it's effective, and we like the way things are going. I think that is it. I did mention the tobacco cessation is an add-on, and that is separate from the $40,000, and that would be fees, it would be depending upon who would opt into that. Some of the reports that I mentioned that I would be getting, I would not have specific names of individuals that would opt in. The only way I would know is if people were coming to me, telling me about their experience, or if we opt to incentivize it, and they would have something that would say, hey, I'm eligible for an incentive in this format that the city might offer. So, I guess, there's always a concern on the confidentiality, but just to make sure that, make it clear that we wouldn't be, you know, obtaining anything that we shouldn't be from this company. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions, or would also turn it over to Mr. Bocky. I guess one other thing, I did not provide you with the full proposal. I do have a copy in the event, any of you would like to take a look at it.
Okay. Do we have questions for staff?
Where do most of the, that $70,000 projected savings, is it $70,000? Most of that comes from generic medication use? Is much of that from decreased utilization of unnecessary services?
Yeah, I will answer according to the policy, and I may rely on Matt to assist me. Give me one second here. I may rely on Matt to assist me. Give me one second here. The breakdown, again, was a conservative estimate based on the percentage. Let me get to the... Okay. The bulk of the savings, and they break it into three different areas. The generic utilization is a piece of that. They also report out into, let me scan here to make sure. They look at some of the healthcare avoidance savings, determined off the member's previous experience and the costs associated with those that are identified and resolved. They look at the compliance part to make sure they've got some data on those that are adhering to the prescribed medication versus not, making sure individuals are refilling and taking the medication as needed. And then, I guess, back to the overall savings, in addition to the generic substitutions, if there are just other alternatives or discontinued medications through pharmacy advocate program, affordable med program, if there are things that, it might not be the specific generic, but it might be an alternative or something that would be comparable, that has the same results, they might work with the individual to transition that way also, to make sure they're aware of some alternatives. And I might turn to Mr. Bocky, and he can fill in. That was, the fringe is, I'm sure he can get more detailed than that.
Okay, great.
Just, just so you won't think I'm a smartass, I'm a physician as well.
Yep.
My question would be a little... I know a lot of insurance companies and pharmacy providers have similar programs where they will question the physician. You know, you could use this medication, or that, or...
Right.
Electronic health records are supposed to alert us when medicines don't, don't mix with each other. Does this interact, or does this coordinate with information that the patient's probably going to be getting, or the doctor's going to probably be getting from their own insurance company as well?
Yes, so the way it works is that we will be getting direct data feeds directly from MedTrack Services, which is your pharmacy benefit management company. We get that on a weekly basis, and then our, as Natalie said, our proprietary software is going to identify who these high-risk members are, opportunities to go from brands to less expensive generics, or brands to less expensive brands. Our outreach then, and this is based on advice from a group of independent physicians out of the Kansas City area, is number one, let's talk to the patient first, or the member, to see if they've tried that medication before, what their reactions are. Are they motivated to try something different? Once we've gotten that approval, then we contact their physician to let them know that this is the current medication you're taking, here is a alternative. With their stamp of approval, we'll send them actually a prescription to sign and then send to the pharmacy. At that point in time, we'll alert the member to let them know that their physician has approved the alternative switch.
Now, does Tria assist with actually filling out the paperwork for the patient assistance program?
Yes. Well, patient assistance program goes a little bit different. If you're looking at the, like, financial hardships where they're in, we do have situations where if members are having a hard time finding reasonable alternatives for their medications, take insulin for diabetes, we will go through manufacturers to try to get them the paperwork. In those cases, yes, we can assist in getting the coverage for that as well.
Okay, because what a lot of nurses complain of nowadays is, you know, two or three hours of their day is spent, they're not careful, filling out these forms for patients.
Right. Absolutely. And I think another important part is, is as we encounter these, we provide that feedback back to, would be Mr. Bob Charlesworth, as well as the plan, to let them know what are the barriers their members are encountering. That way, if, in some cases, we've actually gone through and did different incentives to get members to participate in the program, lower copay amounts, that way you're removing that barrier to care on the actual cost of the medications. Meanwhile, they are engaging with our clinical pharmacists to making sure that they're adhering to their medications, they're getting the desired health outcomes, and that way it creates a win-win situation, as the plan will then experience less cost on the medical.
Okay, and just one last, for the tobacco cessation program, does that $250 include medications?
It does not. No, that would be, depending on what the, is determined as the right medication for the use of that member, could be an over-the-counter, a patch, or a lozenger. Maybe it could be something as strong as Chantix. It would depend on what we recommend to that member and what is approved by the physician to utilize. But it does include, it's a three-month program of health coaching, so not only are we aligning the right medication to help them quit using tobacco, but we're also breaking the habits of utilizing smokeless or smoked tobacco.
And how often do you interact with them, because a lot of times, folks who are trying to quit don't want to even spend the money for the Chantix.
Well, see, and that's the first thing you have to understand, is looking at the motivation, and that's why it is an opt-in program. So the city would only be paying for those members who said, I am ready to quit, and we've assessed that desire. And once they've had their first consultation with the pharmacist, we'll determine a quit date, and then we'll have monthly conversations with them with additional follow-up as needed to make sure that they're sticking to the plan, seeing what challenges they're having, is the medication working right for them, and then at three months, we'll verify that they've gone three months without utilizing tobacco. They have, within that $250, if, let's say, three months later, they have a relapse and they want to go back in the program, they can re-enroll again with no additional cost to the plan.
Can the city pay us that $250, or the individual?
The city, the city would, yes.
Okay. I'm done.
Okay. No, appreciate it.
Well, it's good to have you answer those questions.
What's the incentive to get the employee to participate in this program?
The most successful one that we've found is to offer a value-based plan design on generic medications to treat the seven of the eight conditions that we use to identify who the high-risk members are. So you're looking at your diabetes, blood pressure, cholesterol, mental health, osteoporosis, respiratory, and then congestive heart failure. And so once those members engage, talk to our pharmacists, we then send a feed to the pharmacy benefit management. So when the member then goes to fill their next script, they may get that generic medication at $0, rather than paying $10 or $15 or a co-insurance. We have the flexibility to alter that.
Are we on a co-insurance? Is that what it?
So if it's on a co-insurance, we could just lower that co-insurance for those conditions and for those members versus going at a straight $0.
So you're going to be working as an adjunct to our current prescription program?
Correct.
Okay.
And we've got relationships with MedTrack Services and other cities such as City of Topeka, Lawrence, Johnson County, very other municipalities, where we've been doing this since 2008.
How much savings on average have you been able to, I know they're a little larger than us, but...
Yeah, obviously, it depends on the engagement rate, but usually what you're seeing is anywhere from two and a half to maybe the four to one return. Getting back to a question I was asked earlier, is how do we show those savings? Roughly about 35% of your savings is going to come over in hard dollar, so almost pays for the program in itself with discontinuation of medications, less expensive brands to generics, or brands to less expensive brands. The other two areas are the healthcare avoidance savings. So if a member had a medication-related problem that was addressed with their pharmacist, and it was corrected, and in the last 90 days they went and saw urgent care or their primary care physician, we're going to say that we prevented that one-time savings of happening again. And the last area is then based on compliance data.
Okay, good. Further questions? Is everybody okay with not having read the...
I have one more question.
Yeah.
When, you're talking about this change, or being the adjunct to the patient's prescription plan, so the money that you provide, then, would you be providing money?
No.
To the pharmacist to pay for the extra, for the extra...
No, our, the pharmacists that would be doing these conversations with the members and working with the physicians, they're employed at Tria Health.
Yeah.
So we have 15 pharmacists on staff that engage with only our patients, or they're outside of the retail setting, and all they do is provide our services telephonically.
Right, but I'm just asking, in terms of, you were saying, well, we'll just let them have no deductible.
Right. So the plan picks up that difference. So there is a...
Prescription plan?
Yes.
So that's not included in the $40,000, but that adds cost to the prescription plan?
Right. So depending on what that incentive is, we can do some incentivized modeling and work, I think we've done it, maybe already done that with Mr. Charlesworth from a consultant side to look at what the different price would be. On average, you may be looking at an extra $150 per engaged member. Taking that into consideration on a return on investment, you're still going to be over a two-to-one return with those based on our savings.
And I may not have understood that. So what happens to that?
Essentially, so if I was going to go get a generic, and as a member, I would pay, let's say, $10 to get that. If I am engaged in the Tria Health program, the Pharmacy Advocate program, I am now going to get that generic, let's say, Metformin for $0 copay. The plan then picks up the copay amount that I initially would have, and it would have been billed by MedTrack Services versus the plant, or the member paying that copay amount.
It's pretty easy, though, to claim savings when we are increasing the deductible, or the deductible participation by, on our part, to...
Well, there's...
...more enticing for the patient to go generic rather than script.
Well, the average savings right now, according to MedTrack Services, around $1,800 savings if you ever get someone to go from a brand to a generic. So in those cases, the only way to identify those is to have an outreach and to engage that individual. With all the ones that we are doing, and what we take savings for can actually be quantified back that the medication switch was due to our interventions.
If we just went to straight no deductible or generic equivalence?
Mm-hmm.
That would take away part of the, your benefit.
You would find that maybe you could get people to switch from brand to generics, but at the end of the day, with any medication that is being used, you don't know just because someone's on a generic whether or not they're actually achieving their health goals, and they're controlling their conditions any better. So that's why it's really important for us to align that clinician to that member to understand more than just, can you afford your medication, but are you taking it as prescribed? If not, why is that? Most of the time, it's not that people forget, but it's the side effects that go with it, it's the cost barriers that go with it. So there's a lot more into that situation that we do in our Pharmacy Advocate program.
Isn't that something that's not being done by the physician with the patient?
No, it's not.
Should be.
Should be. Right, right now, you've got seven minutes.
How do you measure that, though?
In which regards?
That the health outcome is being achieved. Because the real savings, obviously, is reducing unnecessary...
Right. We have the ability, number one, we track, it goes back to healthcare avoidance savings, of what took place before due to the medication-related problem we identified. But then, there's not a graduation to our Pharmacy Advocate program. So members who have been engaged with us, let's say, in day one, will still be engaged in our program a year, two years later. So there's constant follow-up. So depending on the individual's need, our pharmacists may talk to them every other month, maybe only talk to them twice a year, depending on how much interaction they require from our pharmacists and to coordinate that care with their physician. We can go back through, for clients that have been with us multiple years, and actually analyze the trends in the medical and pharmacy spend, once, and compare those for the engaged members versus where they were trending before. So you can also do kind of post-analysis through the medical claims.
You have access to that?
As long as we can get that from, Mr. Charlesworth would request that from Blue Cross, and we could analyze it.
Physicians have been receptive to another phone call coming in, asking...
Eighty to 90% of our recommendations are approved by the physicians. And the way the physicians look at it is, right now, is, as there's a shortage of especially primary physicians out there, they're looking for other clinical resources, i.e. pharmacists, to help them manage their patients. So now you have a clinical pharmacist working with the physician and tying in, what is it that the multiple physicians are prescribing, into one central hub. So you have a cardiologist prescribing one medication, and a primary care prescribing something else. Currently, that information's not being shared efficiently to those members. So that is where Tria Health can come in and be that circle, or the coordinator, coordination of care.
Real quick question on this, and that is, kind of goes to Commissioner Hardy's question back with the prescription benefit management, the MedTech, MedTrack?
MedTrack.
Is that right?
Yes.
How long is our contract with MedTrack?
We transitioned to them, I believe it was June of 2012.
Okay. And because, Mr. Bocky, you had said that you have worked with MedTrack. It sounded like part of your narrative in there says that you've...
Yeah, with, MedTrack would be one of several PBMs that our clients utilize.
Okay, so if this were, if this were deemed successful, we do it and deem successful, we wouldn't necessarily need to stick with MedTrack in order to continue to have those benefits?
You would need to, MedTrack is, and we are not a pharmacy benefit management company, we're not a replacement of what they do. We enhance the services on managing prescriptions. So MedTrack's primary responsibility is to negotiate the rates and adjudicate the claims that come through. PBMs are not, I guess, responsible for actually making sure that members are achieving the outcomes from those medications.
Okay.
Matt, real quick to elaborate on that, though. I think the question is, what if we decided for some reason we wanted to get away from MedTrack and work with another pharmacy?
We have the ability to work with any of the other PBMs.
All right, yeah.
That's great, that's...
Okay, sorry, thank you.
One area I wanted to clarify when we talked about the copays. Currently, our prescription benefit is 30% for our members, and the city picks up the other 70%. So, you know, anything we look at that we can do when we look at the average cost for those either specialty or brand-name drugs versus the generic, you know, while it may seem unfair that we're picking up all of it, the savings for not only the individual, but largely in part of how much those specialty drugs are costing our plan, when we pick up 70% of it, if we can transition those to some generic, it's a very large savings for us.
We currently do not differentiate between script and generic.
There's, there's like, and I have to go back and look at some of the reports, but there's usually like a specialty and a brand. There's an in-between, and it kind of depends on how they are structured, but then there is a generic. And currently, we have about 80...
But we don't charge less for generic?
No, no, you're right. It's 30%. It's 30% of the generics.
So we don't currently encourage people to look at generics?
Well, we try to encourage it by putting the information out to say, MedTrack has a great website, you can go on there, you can price your subscriptions or prescriptions, you can see how much you'd save. You can also compare from pharmacy to pharmacy what that might be. You can look at if you have ongoing medication needs, look how much cheaper you might be able to get it via mail order. So there are other components of us trying to promote that consumerism, but you're right, as far as saying, if you go generic, we cover it all. We currently do not do that. It's still 30%. We have about 82% usage for generics now. That's up a few percent from a few years ago, so we're optimistic about that, but there's still, there's a pretty large margin of savings if we could continue to get people for those that are affected for them.
Natalie, do you have an idea what our generic utilization rate is compared to national standard, or whatever our group is? We're pretty much in line with that, if I remember from the last time we spoke about it.
I think we may even be 1% to 2% over in some of the areas, and maybe, you know...
Yeah, so we have a pretty decent overall generic utilization rate. Commissioner, I think the issue is, we all would like to think that cheap prices mean people are going to go to that product, but they don't. Not in the medical field, they just don't. And there are a lot of people out there, they like commercials, otherwise we wouldn't see millions and maybe probably tens of millions of dollars spent on commercials for name-brand drugs every year. We wouldn't see drug companies spend millions, millions, who knows, maybe more than that, trying to keep their drug from becoming a generic, or, you know, keep generics out, so they can hold on to that and make money, because they know that those commercials and that drug means something to somebody. So the... So the biggest piece of this is to really take the initiative to overcome the commercials and overcome the convoluted approach to prescriptions and get straight to the employee and give them what appears to be a reasonable option from cost and a health perspective and see if they take it. And the experience, I think, has been pretty good as a whole, and we would evaluate the experience. I think it's a good thing to try. I think we need to continue to look at options. We certainly would evaluate the experience after the year and see if it doesn't work for us. We certainly wouldn't want to do it again. If it does work for us, then certainly we would consider wanting to bring it back to you.
And what is the total cost of the, of this, of the contract amount?
Yeah, the, the contract amount, we're looking at about, based on when they gave us the proposal and where our enrollment was at, it would be about forty thousand dollars for a year. Obviously, that's going to fluctuate a little bit as, you know, employees have decreased or enrollment increases. And then depending on how many people would opt in voluntarily to the cessation program. But we're projecting forty thousand. Now, that is the fees, the straight contract fees. How we decide to incentivize it is going to add some expense. If we say we want a hundred percent, the rest, the copay, the thirty percent is picked up by anyone who goes to those generics, like Matt mentioned. Obviously, that's going to increase our fees more. We would have to go back and look at some modeling to decide exactly how we wanted to incentivize those different areas. But the fee structure alone, we're projecting about forty thousand dollars.
What might that final number look like? I mean, just from... I mean, obviously, we don't need to...
Right. I'm just saying, it's probably going to be an extra probably five thousand dollars, maybe more.
Okay.
I'm just thinking off the top of my head, based on average participation. And the reason you want to offer that incentive is to get members to engage into the program and talk to the pharmacist. What you're going to see then from the healthcare savings and what you're going to see the decline on the medical is a decrease in urgent care, ER visits, hospitalizations. Hopefully, an increase in your primary care visits to get those preventative screenings and yearly physicals. That's where you really start to see an impact.
Okay. So we're looking at maybe about a fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollar price tag. We're talking about a conservative estimate of seventy thousand in savings, which could easily be more, and we're talking about a one-year trial.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you work with different pharmacies than in town? Because pharmacy A, and I have personal experience, would charge me thirty-eight dollars a month for a drug. Pharmacy B would charge me eight dollars a month for the same drug.
Right.
Which is quite a difference.
Right. And what we direct the members to do is utilize the resources that they already have available, as Natalie mentioned, through MedTrack's website. Can be an example where you can actually compare the different pharmacies and see what the different costs are. One of the big things that we strive to do is to drive self-consumerism into, in self-management. So enabling the members and providing education and the tools and resources to help them manage their healthcare costs most effectively.
Those different prices in town would be on that website?
I believe that is correct.
Well, the reason I'm asking, that's a lot to ask of, I'm going to say, most patients. There's some who, out of economic necessity, will do it, and you have just some young savvy consumers who will do it. They'll do it if they're buying five pounds of sugar. They'll see who's selling it for less. But, you know, with the electronic health records, you know, drug interactions are supposedly caught before the prescriber even signs off on the prescription. And in Solana, we have a fairly high penetrance of electronic health records. But I'm just wondering about the additional costs because the copays, and a lot of people can afford the copays, and not everyone's going to need a waiver, but the tobacco would add more cost on our end. And a lot of times, physicians change medicines. They want another visit just to look at the person to see if they're doing well. I guess unless you have somebody who's really checking outcomes and making sure people are calling the doctor on Friday morning instead of going to the ER Friday afternoon, just taking care of the medicine, then keep that person out of the emergency room. I mean, it's a start.
Right.
A lot of ER visits are for medication side effects, but the side effects generally, I've found, don't really discriminate between generic and brand name. If a person doesn't tolerate the medicine well, they're going to get sick no matter who's...
You're absolutely right. And we believe that the best person to address the interactions of medications, especially when you're combining, and we look at our average patients taking ten medications, including over-the-canters, supplements, and prescriptions. The best person to assess what is going on there would be a pharmacist who understands the interaction of those. So as we look at non-compliance and it's driving a lot of the rising cost in healthcare, if you can address the non-compliance and the non-adherence and the side effects they're having and get them to take the most appropriate medication for them, then we know that we can have an impact on your medical trends.
Yeah. That part I like. I'm just thinking that forty thousand sounds more like sixty thousand.
We'll find out.
And the question about working with the pharmacies here in town, that was one of the questions. We talked about the individuals that, you know, maybe they do engage with the, what do you say, the telephonic pharmacist consultant? And they say, you know, this might be something you'd like to try. You can save. Tria does not dictate who they refill those prescriptions or start that script with. The employee or the spouse or dependent still has that control. They can pick where they're going. I would assume they're working in conjunction with their physician on which pharmacy they're going to be working with. So while they don't call the pharmacist and work with them directly, you know, that consultant, that consulting interaction may be that initially with the Tria pharmacists, we don't say you can't go to this pharmacy or this pharmacy. That is still, you know, the option and the choice, good or bad, then the consumerism is back on them to look for the best pricing.
Because what we've found is that people will do best if they get their prescriptions from the same pharmacy on a regular basis. And unfortunately, the same pharmacy is not going to have the best price on each drug because if the prescriptions are split across town, guarantee you, they're not going to, they're going to be missing.
Yep. And back on the MedTrack side, they do have like a retail network. So for those ongoing medications, we're able to see, and I would say, and I don't know the exact percentage, but more than not, maybe just a couple of those larger pharmacies here in town don't participate in some of those network pricing, the Retail Ninety programs. Most of them do, and hopefully, a lot of our employees are learning about that. But, you know, there's a couple that haven't got on board and give across the board some of those discounts, but most of them do.
Because a lot of insurance companies now will mandate that if you're on the drug more than two months or whatever, you have to get a ninety-day supply for certain types of medication. You know, so some of that's already in place.
That's what's built into that, what they call their Retail Ninety. That's like a network agreed upon pricing.
Okay. Any further questions? I think we're done here. It's great to have an expert on this stuff.
Well, maybe not.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item at this time? And I see no public comment. So we'll bring it back for action. Let me just ask quickly, since we don't have, this is a, this would be to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement. And since we have not seen the agreement, only the details of the agreement, is everybody fine with that or would anybody need to see the agreement? Okay. Well, good. I concur, and the city manager will be entering into the agreement, not the mayor. So he gets to read all the details, and I'm sure if there's any hiccups in there, he will let us know. So bring it back for action.
Mayor, I move we approve on resolution number fifteen seventy-two sixty-eight, authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with Tria Health for medication therapy management effective October one, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number fifteen dash seven-two-six-eight. Do we have any further discussion?
Do we have a date or that Natalie will come back and give us a report about the, how the...
One year. That's a good question. Do we, how many months in would you expect to have fairly decent data to share?
Yeah, at least six months.
At least six months. So we'll make a note to come back when we have that after the six-month period to see that we have good data to come back and share and see how it's going.
And this would be a single-year contract?
Yes, this agreement, yes.
So we'd be reviewing that data before making a decision on extending it?
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five-zero. Okay, thank you.
Item seven point five, resolution number one five dash seven-two-six-nine, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with the Rebecca L. Augustine Trust.
Great. Staff, report Dan Stack. Yes? Very good. We'll receive those. Okay, before you get started, can you maybe just let us know what our little, what the, was it a minor modification here or? I mean, are we going to be, what are we going to be looking for here?
I think it will be minor, and I don't believe it would relate to the major subjects in Mr. Stack's report. I thought it could, but I didn't send the context, and I'll take it seriously. I think it will be minor.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In the process of the North Ohio project, we've been working with the property owners throughout the project to basically get easements and affect their property for, you know, for the next six months. So it's something we've been working on with the couple of large properties, one being the, the storage, triplet storage on the, this would be the east side of Ohio Street. That's Rebecca Augustine Trust. We've been dealing with Mr. Mark Augustine. One of the requests during the easement process is just basically the effect of, it is all right-of-way, but we are putting in a large sidewalk on their side of the street. And they've historically used, they have a, basically, an area in front of their, in front of their building where they have some angled parking. And so their request was, could we possibly still use the three foot of space between the sidewalk and the right-of-way, give them extra maneuverability basically for cars to basically back in and back out onto the, and maneuver about the property the way they've always done it. So this was a request by the property owner. Felt like it was a, you know, it's a fair request. It can work. There are many sidewalks in town where, you know, that they're in the front of your property and you have to deal with backing out, making sure you don't, you know, hit people. So that's fairly normal process. We feel like, you know, this is, you know, they don't utilize that parking, you know, it's not a really busy, it's only five parking spots, not a real busy area, but it is, it's beneficial to them, and so we felt like it was a fair request. And we would at least try to demark, basically delineate, and we thought about putting grass in there or rocks or some, some way to delineate between the sidewalk and the property line. Well, the, you know, three foot of grass is, in an area where cars are driving, is a, is a challenge to maintain, and it could, you know, get, be harder for them to maintain. And so colored concrete seems to be a, a nice way to delineate between the sidewalk, property. That's an area where, that we would visibly see that not going to be parking there. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be rutting it up if it's muddy. You wouldn't have those issues. So that's, that's the way we felt like the, the colored concrete would help us in that, in that regard. So we said we would bring this to the commission, and it is your ultimate, yea, you can say yea or nay. It's not, we don't, you know, I guess we think it'll work, but it is the right-of-way, and it's something we need to get your permission for, so. And then Greg can explain what the changes are between the license agreement. Thank you, Greg.
Okay.
I'll begin briefly. The changes began there on, well, if you first look to section six, you'll see that we have the standard indemnification provision. We also then in five have our comprehensive general liability insurance requirement, which is intended specifically to support and provide the source in the event that we would ever have to look to that indemnification provision. The first requested change appears in subparagraph B. Generally, on a shorter-term contract, we will have this additional insured requirement where the city would be named as an additional insured, and the request has been made that that be omitted. Staff believes that to be a fair request in this context, in that this license agreement could go on for presumably decades. It is different in that way from your normal contractual arrangement where the engagement might be just for a fairly brief period of time. And if there would be an event, you would want the contracted party's carrier to assume the defense. In this case, the only difference would be is that the city would be left if we were involved in any sort of claim arising from the use of the, of the right-of-way. It would be then the city's insurance company's responsibility to come in and defend. As you can see in the indemnification provision, those costs are still recoverable. It's just a matter of who incurs them first. So we felt like on balance, that was a, seemed to be a reasonable request. Similarly, in subparagraph C, we generally speak of those insurance companies that are admitted to do business in the state of Kansas. At the request, again, of Mr. Augustine and the explanation, given that general liability insurance coverage for storage facilities such as is involved here is a sufficiently limited market that it is sometimes necessary for them to look to other states and possibly be ahead of when that's, when that carrier might have been admitted to do business in Kansas. This would enable them, if necessary, to look to a carrier that would have to be admitted in the state of their, in which they are incorporated, but not yet necessarily the state of Kansas. So that gives them the flexibility they were desiring. It's also a little difference. In this situation, we are not requiring them to obtain additional insurance. This would be their own insurance. So we assume that they would have the same interest that the city would in terms of the viability of that insurance company. And then lastly, generally, we require a, or provide for a one-hundred-and-eighty-day notice in the event that there would be a public need for utilization of this property. Given the rather narrow scope of this particular license agreement and the fact that we're completing these improvements in this timeframe, we felt like we could give that one-year calendar, one calendar year notice if there would ever need to be a transition in the use of the, of the affected right-of-way.
Other questions?
Any questions for staff?
There are no bus stop seats or any permanent structures in this sidewalk area?
There's not, no.
Is this paving over the right-of-way done in the initial building of the structure that's there?
You mean before we got, before the city's work? They have a, basically, a sidewalk section there now, and that is the part, that's what's, that's basically what exists there now. Yeah, so yes, it was paved. It looks like a sidewalk section. They just had it further off on the right-of-way currently.
I'm just curious, during the building process, would right-of-way been, have been identified for the builder?
Typically, yeah.
In terms of determining setback and all that kind of thing for the building to accommodate parking?
Yeah, this, yeah, I see what you're saying. The, yes, the...
To in terms, in terms of determining setback and all that kind of thing for the building to accommodate parking?
Yeah, this, yeah, I see what you're saying. The, yes, the, it was a, Dean has a lot of history on this property, it's been replatted, it's been platted, it's been, they actually have dedicated right-of-way. So yeah, he can, he can speak to that. It was a greenhouse before, like a greenhouse or a landscaped place before?
It used to be Twin Valley Nursery before it was a mini-storage facility, and the property was unplatted, and it was, it was already developed at the time that triplet purchased it, and then triplet platted it. And at the time of plating, the right-of-way expanded by 10 feet, they dedicated additional right-of-way for the widening. But many of those improvements were already there, including a sign. And so they, they had a license agreement for their sign as well. But a lot of that pavement, when it was first installed, was not in the right-of-way, but then when they dedicated 10 feet of additional right-of-way, it moved it into the right-of-way. So I don't think they actually realized that part of their maneuvering area they had dedicated is additional right-of-way for Ohio. But they didn't put it in the right-of-way, it became right-of-way after the pavement was in.
Any further questions? Mr. Stack, on the property that is directly to the south, the Orchelands?
Yes.
What is the condition there, and what is it, is it, is there a little more area between the parking and the sidewalk? There, or? If we do have a map, don't we?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know if there's a lot more room or not there. I know I can, I can have to, I'll have to look into that further. They're, they're, they have a parking lot striped and maneuvering, they don't, they don't need the three feet for any reason, so, but that's a good question to see whether that will be grass, or, I mean, if that's what you're getting at.
Right, yeah.
Grass or pavers, or colored concrete, that's a good, good question. So we'll have to look into a little bit more.
Right, okay. And I take it we're not gonna do green, stained colored concrete for there?
We haven't picked a color, so.
That is our color scheme, right, green? Okay. All right, well, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item at this time? And signal will bring it back for action.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption Resolution Number 1-5-7269, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with the Rebecca L. Augustine Trust.
Second. Motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution Number 15-7269, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with the Rebecca L. Augustine Trust. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five-zero.
Item 7.6, Discussion and Review of Substantial Interest and Conflicts of Interest Provision.
Okay, Mr. Gage?
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. As you know, the intent of having advisory boards for the city is to bring our citizens on board and have them actually participate in things that go on, help advise and so forth. And some of their role is quasi-judicial, some of it's advisory, and some of it's a mixture at times. With that in mind, though, we certainly realize that there are times that there can be conflicts, meaning general conflicts, I'm not getting into the technical yet with that, but based on organizations it may be a part of, based on financial considerations and so forth. And so at some point, there's a line as to whether they should or shouldn't participate. And these conflicts in the state of Kansas are dealt with, as they are in most states, by state statute, and also dealt with locally by the local organizations. With that in mind, a few months ago, you'd asked staff to look at the American Planning Commission's ethic principles, ethics, ethical principles and planning guidelines for potential use of city boards, and the ones particularly that address land use issues, and I think even more particularly quasi-judicial-type matters. We have brought that and given you that information in an overview of the, kind of the approach that's taken today, and the regulations that are involved today with that. The intent today is really just to get this as a starting point for the discussion for you. It's really up to you as to the degree that you wish to, in essence, in some ways, regulate yourself or other boards and committees for the city. But we didn't bring a formal action today because quite honestly, as you go through this, there's a lot of things to look at and a lot of consideration. So that's really up to you where you'd like to go with that. So my hope is by the end of the discussion, you'll, you may have, you probably will have certain questions, but you may have certain general direction, you may not at this point in time. But the point of all this is to make sure that we play within the rules that are established for us, and at the same time, decide if you need to tailor, or do not need to tailor rules that we apply beyond the state rules for those types of actions. So with that in mind, we cover a few things, and one of them is a Kansas substantial interest statute. And this can be, a lot of people consider this a con, the statutory conflict of interest rules, but substantial interest is the formal phrase. And it's a statute, of course, approved by the state legislature some time ago. It applies in certain forms to all local government elected, appointed, and hired persons. It's not just to elected or appointed. It even applies to staff as far as substantial interest. There's a definition of substantial interest, and it expands to a person's spouses equaling that to them as far as actions. And it deals with compensation from business, businesses, clients, or customers, and how that, how that compensation comes in, in essence, to the person or their spouse relative to the actions that are taken. There is a requirement of a filing of substantial interest form, but only by the elected body members, not by others. I should say, just to, just to qualify that, if you, if you have an elected person who steps down in the middle of the term, someone is appointed in that spot, they'd be subject to that. But as far as our typical boards and committees and staff, they're not subject to that form filing, and it's just the way the statute's drawn up. It basically prohibits a person from participating in the making of a contract if they have a substantial interest unless the proper bidding process has occurred and/or a price fixed by law, and then there's an exception for that. Allows those with a substantial interest to still participate, and that's an interesting thing. The law is about disclosure in this case, it's not necessarily, well, it's not about participation, it does allow participation. So it's about disclosure. As you look at your localized aspects of that, you'll get, you can choose whether disclosure is what you're focused on, or whether participation is also a factor. It requires the reporting of a substantial interest by those not required to file that, that form prior to acting on any matter with a business in which the person has a substantial interest. So if you're talking about someone other than potentially the state-elected governing body member that may have the substantial interest covered in a form, and again, let me add this too, it's a look-back provision as well. But if it's someone who's not required to fill out the form, they still have the obligation to disclose a substantial interest. And it does provide the penalty of a Class B misdemeanor for violating the statute, and also includes forfeiture of office for improperly participating in the making of a contract. So depending on what the issue is, it could be a misdemeanor, but, and/or it could be the forfeiture of office. So that's, that's kind of the quick overview of the substantial interest rules in Kansas. The other is the Kansas common law conflict of interest rule. And this is not one that, let me back up, you do find the substantial interest in your board procedures, and you also find those in the procedures for the advisory boards and committees. So it's, we've kind of put that at the end of the procedure piece, so it's kind of out there, and it's a general guidance for, for everyone. We really don't have, like, specific guidance on this common law conflict of interest rule. And what this is, it's recognized by the Kansas Supreme Court, so it's not based necessarily directly in legislative actions, it's based in interpretations through the state Supreme Court. One of the cases that's brought in is Anderson versus City of Parsons. What it basically does is, is it says a public officer owes an undivided duty to the public when the officer, for which the officer serves. The officer is not permitted to place him or herself in a position that would be subject him or herself to conflicting duties or cause that the person to act in a way that is not in the best interest of the public. The person is considered to have violated the public trust and breached the public confidence if he or she acquires any interest adverse to those of the public and fails to fully disclose. Excuse me. For instances in which personal gain would occur, the officer is prevented from acting on that decision. So this gets into the action, not just the disclosure. It's a dual aspect. A common law conflict criteria is generally applied, as generally applied, includes instances of personal nature with direct benefit and involving financial gain, so the three issues. The personal nature, the direct benefit, and involving financial gain. So it's about dollars, again, it's going back into the dollars, to the person and direct benefit. It generally does not apply to the possibility of a future conflict of interest, so it's a little bit more about the here-and-now decision. So you've got the substantial interest, which is about disclosure and finances, and it's a look-back. You've got the common law interest, which is about finances, but it's all, and it's about the here-and-now on an action, and about disclosure and action. So a little confusing, but trying to, trying to differentiate these a little bit. Now, if you look locally, we have bylaws for our planning commission. And the planning commission, as you know, does make quasi-judicial decisions. You have other committees, commissions, that also make quasi-judicial decisions that aren't subject to these same bylaws. And so part of the, part of the issue is, is, and you're gonna see that we'll recommend that we need, whatever we do from a local perspective, we need to be consistent across all the boards that make the same types of decisions. I think that's very, very important, because the implications are the same. In those bylaws by the planning commission, they do specifically address conflicts of interest, they define the, the relationship to include, to the member to include employer, business partner, associate, or any person related by blood or marriage. They require that a member disclose the nature of the conflict of interest either prior to or during the meeting. It's usually easier, easier for us to deal with it prior to, if we have a little heads-up, but sometimes someone may not even realize it, because we're dealing, a lot of people look at and say, well, and, you know, intentional, 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 because we watch too much television. But the fact of the matter is, is most of the situations we deal with, they're really unknown to the person, because we pick a late person off the street, put him into this role, we try to train him, and then they have to make those decisions. And a lot of times, these fall into that gray, and it's difficult. So that's, that's why we try to help. It requires that a member leave the room and not participate in a proceeding or action when the member has a recognizable financial interest. It requires the member not represent the party which creates the conflict of interest to the planning commission unless directly representing him or herself. So if the conflict of interest has to do with a certain business entity that, say, a planning commission member is representing, they cannot just simply say, I'm gonna abstain, I'm gonna leave the room, and then come back in and not play the role of planning commissioner, but play the role of representing the business entity. Now, if the actions to be taken affects them, they say their property directly, so they're representing him or herself, does provide an exception for that, but not when they're representing somebody else. Provides, any member may raise a question regarding the conflict of interest of another member with a decision regarding such conflict being the result of a majority vote of those members present. That's the only piece that we have that applies to any of our boards that's fairly specific about, what do you do, if you're on the planning commission, and you think someone else might have a conflict of interest? So we really don't have an across-the-board approach to that issue as well. When we look at the city commission boards and committees, we have the appearance of a conflict of interest rule as well. And this, again, applies to you, and it applies to all of our boards and committees, and it's in the adopted procedures. We, we call that the appearance of a conflict of interest, and some of those may actually fall into this common law conflict of interest, but generally speaking, they probably don't. We have that as Rule Number 23, it's in, I said, both sets of rules, both for you and the other boards and commissions and committees. The subsection addressing the conflict is intended to benefit the commissioner or board member that really doesn't have a substantial interest, because that's its own category, but believes that the appearance of a conflict may be present. Sometimes you just don't know, and you have to ask the question. Provides a means to choose to publicly disclose the appearance of a conflict, and if an appearance of conflict of interest is disclosed, cause a member to abstain from voting and step down from their seat during the consideration of the item in question. So this one is interesting and probably needs some tweaking, because it says the member may choose to publicly disclose, well, but once you do, then it appears to say you have to abstain, but you don't have to leave the room, you just have to go to a seat. So it's a little bit out of tune, again, with some of the other procedures. And so as we start looking at these, there's a lot of housekeeping pieces. I mean, if you get past anything big, there's just some housekeeping things we should probably look at to be consistent. Then we have, coming back to what we started, the APA ethical principles and planning guidelines. Those are attached, were attached to the packet for your review, as well as the information on the other provisions. The second section is the primary section that's relevant to what we're talking about. As you remember, there are basically three sections. The first section's just talking about all of our best-of-intent, the last section deals with primarily a staff-type member, and then the middle section, the second section, deals with the planning-type board members and those on those boards. The primary focus of that is on disclosure of a personal interest, which is broader than a financial interest, you have to keep that in mind. An abstention from direct or indirect participation as an advisor or decision-maker, and not participating on any project or plan in which a member has previously been an advocate or advisor. So in that case, you may not have a relationship, if you applied it directly, with whatever the entity is today, that you're dealing with a land use decision, but you used to, even though there may not be any relationship today, and it says you're not supposed to participate. When we looked at the guidelines, we felt that they were pretty broad, and there's not a real good definition, we would have to define personal interest, it kind of suggests some things, but it's very, very broad. And one of the concerns that we looked at is, some of your boards and committees, you're looking for particular professionals in certain fields, the ordinances, and call that out. And if you look at applying the breadth of this type of language, you might not be able to get that any longer, because the personal interest might come in and create a wall for that. So you'd have to really take a strong look at how you really want to do that. And I'll be honest with you, when we think about it practically, it's really tricky, because as you know, the best policy and the best advice and the best decisions come from a balance of people that represent your whole community. And what that means is, is you want people that are knowledgeable in whatever that field is, and that's why some of your boards and committees ask for professionals in certain fields. May not be directly exactly with what the board's taking on, but it's gonna be close. But on the other hand, there's a perspective that, well, you don't want to fill the henhouse with the foxes, right? Because you're gonna have decisions that benefit the people that are involved in their professions. So you could say, well, so we want people that maybe don't have the professional relationship in that way, but they also may not have the knowledge, and it may be more difficult for them to make that decision. I think in the end, you need a balance of that, but it's not an easy way to say, we want those who might oppose something, because they're, it's not their profession, or we want those who might support it because it is. And there's always an assumption that people will support or oppose something, when in fact, a lot of people can make good independent decisions. But the key, I think, is to have a variety and a balance. And when you do that, you still could run afoul of this, the APA guidelines, if they're strictly applied. So I think that's just something you need to think about, because as we look at some of these committees in which we occasionally will have a hard time filling the positions, maybe getting a quorum, you could knock off a couple people pretty fast if we apply these APA guidelines blindly and strictly, and something comes up, and all of a sudden, boom, you may have a person or two over what you need for a quorum, and then they're gone, because this comes up, and we say, well, you may have a personal interest from who knows when because of this. So that's something to think about. And I'm not gonna go through all of those, but I will go back and hit a couple pieces to that. So we looked at some key questions and issues here, and really, should we simply utilize a statutory substantial interest law? We could use, you could choose to just, you have to be under that. For the most part, you could say that's it as far as a rule. Now, we all know that when you're dealing with quasi-judicial decisions, you could, you could fully meet the substantial interest rule for the state, because it deals with money, but you could still get yourself in an issue with a decision that could be challenged later civilly in court, and that decision could be overturned if you, so, and that's why you have some of these other rules. So it's important to recognize that the substantial interest doesn't cover everything with these quasi-judicial rules. But do you want to have the statutory substantial interest as a first tier? Because it's obligated, it's statutory, it's pretty, pretty out there, pretty easy. And then the common law conflict of interest rule, you really don't have a real choice on that either, it's just something we need to better bring into our, probably our procedures. Or, and how do we then take the planning commission bylaws, which are probably more, pretty, pretty related to what we'd call the common law conflict of interest rule, even though they're different approaches, they're really kind of trying to hit the same thing? How do we reconcile those as a second-tier rule? And then you get into the appearance of a conflict of interest, which, which could compromise, compromise a third, or comprise a third tier. So you really could look at it in three ways, you could look at it in two ways, but that's sort of how we envisioned it. Should requirements such as full disclosure of the conflict, abstention from voting, nonparticipation, non-representation in front of the body be applied consistently with each tier, or be customized for each tier? And we know that the substantial interest law just tells you what you need to do. And you could be more restrictive than that if you wanted to, it's about disclosure. So why I ask that question is, you could say, hey, we've gotta meet the state law for disclosure, but we don't want anybody to participate if they, even if they disclose. You could say that, you could do that. You couldn't be less restrictive, though. And so when you think about that, then the other question is, as you, as you get down to the common law conflict of interest, which we do need to apply, how does, how does, do you apply the same level of rule with that and the substantial interest as you do simply an appearance of conflict? Well, appearance of conflict is gonna be, an appearance of conflict could be a situation in which today, under our current rules, you're on a commission, you're also a board member on another board in town. You don't get any personal compensation, there's no direct, there's no substantial interest, because you're not involved in, say, a contract, and there's no not involved in, say, a contract, and there's no money going to you. But you say, "Gosh, I feel like," and maybe my people in my community feel like, "That I still am pulled that way, so there's a bit of an appearance of a conflict, so I'll just choose to disclose that, and then choose to step down and not vote, because I just don't want that appearance to be out there." You could choose not to do that, because you haven't done anything wrong, or disclose it, but, and so that's the question, do you want a different rule? Could you participate, in essence, in that situation, whereas you might not want someone to participate in a different situation? So, it's something to think about. Should the conflict of interest rules be applied consistently among the city commission and various boards and committees that are authorized to make land use decisions in quasi judicial form? We think the answer's, that's a pretty good yes, I think. What is a protocol to be taken in role of staff and legal counsel when questions regarding substantial interest and/or conflicts of interest arise? Today, we try to be a service, at least preliminarily, until they get too deep and too difficult. The thing is, is that, as you know, the staff's loyalty is to the organization as a whole if they have to, if there has to be a choice versus an individual. So, while we try to help initially, ultimately, it comes back to interpretations and so forth. There may be, include legal interpretations, back to the organization. So, we've got to figure out how to transition that. It's not really been an issue that I can tell in the past, but something always to consider. And what happens, the key, big question, what happens if a member fails to follow statutory substantial interest law in addition, if you want it to be, in addition to current statutory provisions? Because they tell you what happens if they believe, if the state believes you've not followed that. But if you want it to be more strict, what would happen? Or the adopt, any other adopted conflict of interest rules? What happens today? A board can't remove their own board member. The governing body is, you're the law of the land from the municipal perspective, so you have certain discretion built into you, but we don't just flat lay it out. So, those are questions. We really looked at it, and we thought from an approach perspective, it'd be good to at least give you something to chew on, and you can start from there. Helps organize the thoughts, at least. We thought that the three-tiered approach makes some sense. The Kansas substantial interest law would be the first tier. The common law conflict of interest rule, combined with whatever, how we want to bring in the current planning commission bylaws, might make sense, too, because they both are trying to get the same thing. Should apply them so they're properly integrated to the degree that you wish to. And then the third tier would be the appearance of conflict of interest guidelines. And certainly, all of them, we believe, should require full disclosure of whatever the issue is. That makes sense, that's really what the, this is all about. The Kansas substantial interest law require abstention from voting. The conflict is fine to disclose, but I'm not sure if the public may feel that they're, that the action should go forward from their perspective. So, we kind of think, but it really just matters where you want it to go, but we believe that abstention from voting makes sense. And not representing the item as a member, or coming back and representing the entity makes sense. And the same thing for the common law conflict of interest and slash commission, planning commission bylaw integration there. When you get into the appearance of conflict, that really seems to be pretty light, and so, we think it makes sense that it's optional to abstain from voting. You could choose to do that or not. The disclosure's the most important thing, because there's no direct personal or financial benefit, and if there is, you're back into the other tier anyway. So, we believe that that's not such a big deal. Anyway, those, that approach is just giving you something to start from. It's not to put you in a corner or anything like that. The role of staff and legal counsel, as we mentioned today, we would, if someone asked, and we want them to ask, we want people to ask, because our, the whole thing is to get people to act. So, we would try to deal with the issue and provide some guidance, but we know there's a point at which it may switch over. And so, our recommendation would be that we sort of formalize that to where the guidance is provided by staff, and I say, we slash legal counsel, to a member if they ask, or even if we see something we think might be questionable, to initiate that conversation. Because, again, the intent is to discuss it and try to figure out if they can participate or not. And that that is considered a preliminary inquiry with that. But if either their board or the city commission believes, or even on our own initiative, if we believe that the issue really is transforming over, and we're looking at it more of a formal opinion to the board, to the governing body, that then we have to switch over to that. And then that means if they want legal representation, they'd have to get it on their own at that point in time, because we have to pick. We can't, we can't serve both. But we do start with the individual, because quite honestly, most of what we get on these, we don't get these things very often, and they're pretty light, just telling you the way it is. And then we discuss the failure to follow. If someone violates, and again, the Kansas law on substantial interest already provides some penalties, but we really, we don't have anything on our planning commission bylaws, the common law conflict of interest, or anything else. So, our thought is, is there should be something in place. And so, we kind of threw out that a member violating the rules may, at the city commission's discretion, be subject to public censure, which could include a warning of action to be taken if a future violation occurs, and/or removal from the board or committee seat. You can't remove yourselves, so you're just going to be subject to the statutory provisions. But in this case, you are the law of the land for your boards and committees, you assign and appoint. The initiation of that review for the purpose would be initiated by a majority of the respective board, or taken up by, you could initiate any of those on your own, because you have the authority to simply, to leave that out, wouldn't make any sense. So, we felt that that's it. And we did believe that a lot of the stuff that happens is such of minor nature, you're not locked into even a warning or a censure. If you believe that it's not relevant, obviously, you wouldn't do anything. But we think that certainly, you want the ability to just simply be able to communicate and say, "We think, we interpret that this is where you're at, please don't do that again." And if it's significant enough, you could say, "We have the ability to remove you from your appointed board seat." So, I think that pretty much makes sense. It's about application is always the issue there. So, that's what we had. We didn't really have a fiscal impact note on this type of thing, or really conformance with the strategic plan, maybe with the exception of high-quality services, making sure we're representing the public. But as far as alternatives and recommended action, again, we knew there were too many questions to, in any way, expect anything formal to be adopted at all today, and we just wanted to give you a pretty good summary of the kind of environment that we're talking about, all the rules or potential rules that could apply, and the resources that you have, and let you take off from there. So, we'd be happy to answer questions. Again, Greg's here, can get you a lot deeper into substantial interests and conflicts of interest than I would claim to ever be able to do. My job is to stay away from those things, so, actually. And then Dean Andrew, of course, is here, too, and he's, does a great job with our planning-related boards, and he can help with that. Anyway, hopefully, we can help answer your questions, and you can help to get you to the place you want to be.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff? We'll just jump in.
Does being just a strong advocate for a particular movement or position create a conflict of interest if that similar movement were to come before this body? Only one I can think of right now, in my particular case, tobacco awareness.
You just voted on one, though.
I wasn't going to bring that one up.
To try to give you the short answer, Commissioner, I think we do move pretty quickly past the substantial interest analysis. That's always going to be the, by state law, that's always going to be the initial analysis. And I do think we move to that then, too, whether there is the common law conflict of interest, which offhand, you know, that's more a case of whether, where there's an interest that is so literally tempting for your judgment to be swayed to the point that you can't really take the public interest into consideration. It sounds like that's probably not the case, just in a quick rundown. And interestingly, having, having prepared that appearance of conflict of interest segment, I probably more than anyone hope we change it, because it was situational, but frankly, I appreciate your example, because it was prompted by the very situation you just described. A commissioner that might believe that, in their own minds, they could be objective, but in a manner that, as it says, "A commissioner who believes he or she would present the appearance of a conflict of interest, and for that reason chooses not to participate." It's more a matter, in that case, of that you believe that someone else might think you're so involved and so, that the matter would be so predetermined, that you couldn't objectively participate. And it was intended to create, as you know, you have a, generally, you have a duty to participate in any votes taken by this body, and would need to have some reason for abstaining. And frankly, it was designed to provide that basis. Again, situationally, at the time, there was some concern about commission members not wanting to have to vote, because they thought it looked like they had, what, a conflict, even though it wasn't a legal conflict under Kansas law. So, my short answer is getting too long, but it was trying to explain, that example is precisely what precipitated that appearance of conflict of interest language. And if we want to keep it, I think we have to make it all the more clear that it's strictly at the discretion of that member, not something that's intended to create a new legal conflict.
That'd be more like a personal ethics, or how you feel that you would be perceived, right?
Well, that could be. It often came up in the board context, the participation in another board, and that board had a matter that came before this body, and the person, you know, they don't have a legal conflict, but they just were fearful that it would appear that they were favoring a particular entity.
Yeah, it's almost, you could almost describe it, Dean kind of described it the other day. It's really a perception of bias based on your board member's participation with another organization or activity. So, does it affect, does it give them any benefit or anything? Probably doesn't. Most of those cases, they don't. But if the public believes that you're biased because of your other role, you've got to decide which, is city commission your top priority, or is the other? And if the public can't figure it out, that's what that was intended to do, is to give you an option there. Now, if you, if you said, "I want to apply the APA approach," which talks about a personal interest, and it says define it broadly to include any actual potential benefits or advantages that the person, a spouse, family member, a person living might have from that decision, first of all, you have to define what a benefit is. Is it just financial or otherwise, or an advantage? Maybe it's, if we get that, then you're set to get an article published. You may not make any money, but there's exposure just waiting to happen to benefit the person who's interested in it. That's probably a personal interest. Very hard and very broad, so that's where we have to be careful with, if we do apply and take pieces out of this, we have to be careful, because it could actually put you in a real tight corner, too. And that may be something that you want to avoid, and maybe someplace you want to be. It's really up to you to decide.
And if I may, on your example, Commissioner, it also highlights, I think, the distinction that Mr. Gage was referring to earlier, and that is the difference between a legislative matter and a quasi judicial matter. In a legislative matter, we would anticipate that you have an opinion, and you might have made it abundantly clear, you might have campaigned on a particular point related to a legislative matter. And, you know, everyone would expect you to act consistently with whatever you indicated was your position. Now, in the context of a quasi judicial matter, where due process attaches, and, you know, the classic example is the zoning case. That's the Bay Horse case in Kansas, when we first had Supreme Court determination back in seventy-eight, in nineteen seventy-eight, that that is a quasi judicial process. And there, you're taking a specific piece of property, applying the applicable rules to that specific piece of property, and we want to be absolutely sure that you haven't predetermined that sort of matter. So, I think the rules do have to be looked at in the context of whether it's a legislative or a quasi judicial matter.
I've got a number of questions. First of all, I appreciate you guys putting this together and getting this back to us. As it relates to what we already have in place, I mean, I think, obviously, the state statutes are in place. Everything up through planning commission bylaws have been there forever. Rule twenty-three has been there for at least ten or so years. And real quick question, and I'll continue, is that city commission, planning commission, board of zoning appeals?
Yeah, BZA, maybe heritage commission. Not sure if the BID Design Review Board is into that or not. I'd have to look at these guys a little bit more. They do have rules or guidelines they do apply, and with some discretion, so they may, may possibly fall into that, but I don't know. But basically, you've hit the core ones.
Okay. Because I know, having served, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Building Advisory Board can be in that role as well.
Okay. Having served on a board, and I think most everybody here has served on a board outside of city commission, I can recall an orientation meeting in this room with newly-appointed board members, and one of the things that struck me was that not a lot of people, not everybody was there. And it seemed to be optional to attend that. And so, when we talk about picking a layperson up off the street, and I'm going to refer mainly to city commission and planning commission, because you have to fill out an expression of interest and put in, into the category why you want to be on those commissions. So, we're not just going out and asking someone to do this, put them on the street, and then give them no. We give them the opportunity to have, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we went through at least the bare minimum of the conflict of interest, and even, you know, I was aware of the rule twenty-three, serving on the Heritage Commission when I, when I did that. And so, I think there are some things that we should expect people that are appointed to these boards, that are asking to be appointed to these boards, that we should expect from them. And that's why I had proposed that we look at the APA and AICP guidelines for not just conflicts of interest, but ethics. Because I like the three sections of the APA guideline for the code of ethics, because there's, there are little parts that really fit in. But if we look at what we already have, and what they address as conflicts of interest, and what you should do, most of it is what we already do. Probably the only thing different is, and you mentioned it, Mr. Gage, you talked about inter, giving it a broader definition to include, which, which kind of fits more into that appearance of a conflict, which is in our, already in our rule twenty-three. And I think it's already in the, in the bylaws for the planning commission, if I'm not mistaken. But on those, I like, I like what we have. I like that you put a tier system to it, because it's really important. And I know we've strayed considerably in some instances from these, from these guidelines. And probably the biggest, if I had to guess, the biggest reason maybe why that's happened is that we haven't, people that have gotten on these boards haven't really understood what those public, the public trust and what's expected of you from that position. I mean, we don't have, we don't have the time and money to go through and say, "If you're a planning commissioner, this is what your job description is, and this is what you're supposed to be doing, and these are some things you need to look out for to make sure that we maintain the public confidence and public trust." So, hopefully, just the discussion will help, but that's my little part to start with, and I would just look forward to working through some of the questions that you had presented for us.
Mary, you hit on something. I don't know if you intended to, from this perspective or not, but it did cause me to think, which is a good thing, I believe. You were talking about not everyone attends the training. I don't believe the current resolution that we, that guides that we have to offer the training. I don't believe it requires the attendance before someone can act on their board. Might not be a bad idea for that to be required, unless the person has already attended that training, say, for another board, because that, we often see that. If that's something that the commissioners would find valuable.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't have a problem with that provision, but I do have to say that, in the time that I served on the planning commission, that we were, I thought we were very well indoctrinated, and it was, it was thoroughly explained to us what the difference between quasi judicial and, and legislative. legislative things were. And so, I think the information we received, we were given the regulations, it was all very clear to us. I think the inclusion of the APAC ideas, I'm not for broadening the scope of that. The words they use in there, like advocate and personal interest, nobody in town is going to be able to serve on anything that counts. I've been on the Y Board, the Salvation Army Board, I'm a lifetime member, Head Start. Anything that you have personal interests, you wouldn't be able to vote on the budget because of all the things that are in there that go to our personal interests and the things we advocate. So, I think that the rules are pretty well-written as they are. To better educate the people that serve might be a valuable thing, and a requirement that they attend an educational meeting about their responsibilities might be useful. But we can dig a much deeper hole here. We have enough people, enough trouble getting people to serve as it is. The expression of interest form system that we use is not filling the roles that we have out there for them. It's just making it more difficult for people to serve.
I appreciate that, and maybe you can help clarify on this, one of the two of you, is that, you know, when I read that, I don't read, I don't read the key word in that to be an advocate, because I think, as you've mentioned before, Mr. Benksen, that, you know, we run on particular items and stuff. I see the key word when the advocate is used on that, is not that you're an advocate for something, but that you are an advocate on an aspect of a plan or a program, which would mean a particular project. If I'm on the Stiefel Board, I can, I think I can vote on a particular big item that has to do with the Stiefel Board, but if it comes in on a specific plan or item that I was a part of, making a board decision, or if I'm on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, and I make up, you know, and of course, on this board, we can't be, but somebody on an appointed board can, on a planning commission, it could be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And I don't think that would preclude them from being on the chamber, but if they were talking about, one of the things, for instance, that we've talked about recently, a translate facility, or something like that, and, you know, do we pass that and rezone that, do we do all this? I think that there could be a perceived conflict at that project. You may have already had a vote on it, and therefore, might have a position already. So, I don't, and maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think it's so much an advocate as it would be for a particular project, or a plan, or a program, or something like that. I mean, I, because, yeah, otherwise, if nobody had an opinion on anything, nobody'd serve.
Yeah, I think, as Greg mentioned earlier, that one thing you do need to think about as a group differentiating is the, if you're into a quasi judicial land use decision, any predetermination is going to make it where you can't participate versus a non- quasi judicial, so maybe it's a funding request for, maybe somebody's on United Way, well, United Way's not a good example, but just a nonprofit board in town, they have a funding request, they provide a service, you believe that you don't want us to provide directly, but certainly could be an extension of a municipal service. OCCK is a good example in that case. Now, in that case, we do have a contract, and so you have to look at the substantial interest piece and say, "Okay, do I have a substantial interest there?" In most cases, you're not going to have one, so you probably would have what today we'd call the appearance of a conflict of interest, and say, "Hey, I'm on local," or I'm not sure if the OCC Board is put together, "but I'm on the OCCK Board, but I really think we need public transportation, they're the ones to provide it, and I want to participate on that, but I want to disclose that." Where does it fall? Again, when you go back to the APA, it's about personal interest. Now, we have the ability to define that however you want, and still bring that in, but if you kind of go with theirs, there's a benefit or advantage, those are still terms that are far too broad, in my opinion, because what is a benefit or advantage? I could ask that question to ten people and probably get at least five to eight or ten different answers. So, if we would get into the personal interest, we would need to be very specific as to how you would want that defined, so that whenever we get a question, we can provide a clear black and white answer. We probably couldn't do it the way they sort of ask you to define that in this provision. So, yeah, it's, a lot of it is, is how far do you want to go with a non- quasi judicial decision? That's really the big thing, or not go, for that matter, because with that, you get locked up on, and you know that, on those land use quasi judicial decisions, you get locked up anyway, and you're very limited. So, I think that the context of what you're talking about is outside of that realm. And again, it's up to you. It's up to you as a governing body to figure out how tighter or loose that you want that to be, to a degree, except for contract situations, which you're already governed. You could be tighter on contracts, too. Well, a little bit. But if you're on non-contracts, and there's financial relationship, financial advantage for you because of the entity that the decision is about, under the substantial interest, if it's a non-contract, your issue is simply disclosure. And that's one thing you have to decide, is that sufficient, or is that not sufficient enough? Again, that's up to you.
Well, it is certainly a minimum.
It is, it is. I mean, I think that's what it's intended to be. It's intended, really, I think, and Greg.
I mean, on any of the tiers you're looking at.
Yes.
It's a minimum.
We believe that disclosure is a minimum, period, for any of those tiers, absolutely, because we think it's just simply, disclosure is the first and maybe the biggest step to being accountable to the public, and to each other, to each other on the board, too, because a lot of it is that everyone knows where you stand and why you stand there. That's really important in those situations.
The other thing on these expression of interest forms, I don't know if it's just me or not, but I had a terrible time finding them on the website. And I think for the public, and somebody like me who's not very techie, anyway, but there's a lot of people out there who would like to serve on some of those boards, but it's really hard to find that. And then, once you find that, it's hard to find the description of the board, when it meets, and how many days a week, or how many days a month, or, you know, that kind of thing, too. I don't know if it's everybody, but I'd had trouble finding it.
I agree with that comment, because I've hunted the expression of interest form for other people and not been able to find it for them.
Yeah, we hope, and we're still working on the new webpage, that we can simplify that. Those are things, when we get to the point, I'll call it a beta final version kind of thing. We want to really kick that out to people and ask them questions like that, see how easy it is that they can function with that and find those things. It's a very good point.
I think, whatever the topic is we're talking about, what the question or issue is, is that it's important to me, anyway, to be able to have inherent trust in my fellow commissioners, knowing that, in that particular issue, that anyone that is sitting up here approaches an issue with an open mind and is willing to look at all sides of the issue before coming to a final decision, and whatever form that takes is, I guess, would be acceptable to me. I'm looking for a solution that's best for the public, the general public.
Okay, well, we, as part of the discussion, staff has asked us to, I think, provide some input to perhaps some key issues and questions that may help them take this to the next level. So, if you want to, we're on page three here at the bottom, key questions and issues. Do you want to just go through those, or how would you like to do this?
Sure, I think that might help us to get some direction. I think there's a little more detail we'll eventually need to get to, but that sure is a good start.
Okay.
Yeah, so the first one is, should we simply utilize the statutory substantial interest law as a first-tier rule? And we have to bring in the common law conflict of interest. It's a bit of a gap that we have. And like I said, with that, I do think that the planning commission bylaws are intending to kind of do the same thing, and we need to meld those together somehow. And they can call it a second tier, just simply because one is, well, they're both legally based, one's just flat-out statutorily based. They could be considered the same tier, for that matter. Or continue to address the appearance of conflict of interest, which comprises a third-tier rule. So, I guess the question is, is do you like the idea of looking at these and say, "We have substantial interest, common law conflict of interest," and those are kind of statutorily and otherwise legally based from the state perspective, one being court-based. We have to do something with those that will require us to bring in the planning commission bylaws as we think about that, and we think about not just the planning commission, but the other commissions, but then also address the appearance of a conflict of interest. So, you could look at it as a two-tier or three-tier, it really doesn't matter, it's just a way to visualize it. Are you interested in that?
Discussing it at the September, I'm sorry, August twenty-fourth study session would be a nice time. This is a lot to absorb, to answer, I mean.
It is.
Well, I think.
I'm assuming next Monday's already taken, as far as agenda items.
I don't believe the next Monday's study session is taken.
I would like to just sit back and read through this whole thing and think about it a little bit before I answer the questions.
One thing that we might be able to do to make it a little bit easier, I don't know, because I haven't tried it yet, but a lot of times, that little grid, here are the rules across the top, and here's some application issues, and putting an X kind of thing might help you a little bit.
That's what I was going to try to figure out this week, but if you'd like to volunteer for the.
Well, we've kind of started this out in public. I think we need to finish this in public, so if you could get those put together, I think it's.
Yeah, we can try to do that. Let me go through here real quick, though, if I can tonight. Is disclosure in all circumstances something that you're looking for? Let's go to that one.
Yes.
Is that easy?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't think we're that far, I mean, there's a lot of information here, but we've all, we all read our packets, so we're, I think you only have four questions.
Yeah, now, when you look at the substantial interest law, you disclose, but you can still vote. But when you look at the common law conflict of interest, and Greg, I might have to look at you, because I think you could have a situation which brings both in, or you could have a situation in which you're going to fall into one or the other. But the substantial interest is a look back, maybe that's the difference, whereas the common law conflict of interest is what's going on right now, or really, I believe that's really the intent.
That's true.
They both deal with personal benefit through financial gains. The substantial interest says disclose, but you can vote. The common law conflict of interest says you disclose and you don't vote, is my understanding. I might turn that over to Greg to see if he has any other input on that, but that's one that you're really going to want to put some thought into, I believe. The reason I say that is because it almost doesn't make sense to me to have the common law conflict of interest in which you disclose and can't vote, but with the substantial interest, you can disclose and vote. It's inconsistent in the application, but I think Greg might have a thought or two on that, possibly.
Well, as you can tell, and I haven't done exhaustive research of the legislative history, but that substantial interest test is designed to be objective. It is an objective, it's generally a math problem, in terms of whether that financial interest exists, and the four or so various circumstances under which that could arise. It applies in the prior calendar year for three of you in the, anyone that has been in the elected office has a duty to annually update the substantial interest disclosure statement. Any newly elected persons, it relates back to the filing when you originally filed for office. So, the prior year is a different test, depending on your circumstance, but it's all historically based. And as I say, once you know the timeframe, and once you know your individual circumstances, it's a math problem. And if the math tells you that you have a substantial interest, then, as Mr. Gage has pointed out, in general, you must disclose, but presumably have done so through the substantial interest statement, or if it's a contract, that's when you cannot participate, unless, the exception to the exception is if it has been publicly bid. I don't think Bob Frank would mind my mentioning that. We ran into that several times when Bob Frank was on the commission. The company with whom he was involved often bid, but that was okay for him to vote, because it was always a general public bid, so that, you know, we have had that historically.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is the appearance of having, I mean, it's termed loosely insider information on the contract of what's being bid, or how it should be bid, is that not a reason for a commissioner to not have his or her own company bid on a contract?
Not when it's generally published as, I mean, I think the rule would be that if there's an ad in the Salina Journal that says the city is taking bids on such and such, then that's open for whomever might wish to participate. And it's my understanding, I mean, certainly, there's going to be a certain level of familiarity that others might not have, but I understand the rule to be.
Because there are instances when the winning bid is not necessarily the lowest bid, but it's based on the proficiency and experience of the company, the fact they're already here doing work, they've done work for the city before, and those are little soft influences that get a little harder to defend as far as just having the lowest bid.
Yeah, but aren't those more likely involved in a statement of qualifications versus a request for bid?
Well.
Or sometimes, yes.
That's true, but I do think, Commissioner Davis keeps giving me the examples that I need. I do think that is the case of where, I think it's a perfect example of the application of the common law test. If you're, you know, the scenario you described, you're involved with a contracting company, and you bid, your company has bid, it's one of the bidders, there is, you know, maybe not the low bidder, but you believe that you can make the case that there is some reason that you, your company's bid should be elevated and awarded the bid. Not to read to you too much, but to keep from paraphrasing too much, the summary that we had prepared in trying to pin this common law test down speaks of it arising when a commissioner has an interest that is not shared in common with, or is adverse to the general public interest, and which interest has the likely capacity to tempt the commissioner to depart from the commissioner's duty to the city and to the public. You know, you're right. I think even though it might be in an open public bid scenario, if you are motivated and it starts manifesting itself in, you know, your interest, the interest you're carrying is the company, then I think that's the classic example of what the common law test is trying to reach, where you might have technically fallen outside the substantial interest test, but yet you've got a real present interest. Not a remote one, not a speculative one, not that you might get a contract someday, but, you know, you're there, and you're in a position to try to influence that to your own benefit and to the detriment of the public.
Well, one might also make the argument that in any of these scenarios, if there is that, if you fall back down to the appearance, really, the only reason why you wouldn't probably want to be on, or that you would choose to stay and vote, would be if you might be the one person that makes the quorum. So, otherwise, without your participation, you wouldn't be able to deal with the item.
But also, if you abstained, you're going to be counted as a no vote. Abstention will be on the no side.
True, that's true. The, I'm, as I say, I'm hoping we can deal with that appearance of a conflict better than we have so far. It's really not the creation, I mean, it's really the antithesis of a conflict of interest. In other words, it's not a legal conflict of interest, but that appearance is intended to address those situations where it's not a conflict, but it kind of looks like one. And I don't know if there are better words than anybody can come up with, but as I say, it was kind of situational back when we were dealing with that question. And it might still be of concern to you all, I don't know. Those situations where, no, it's not a legal conflict, but it kind of looks like one, and you don't want it to look that way.
But once you're into that contract, it would become a conflict if there were a change order involved.
Yeah, that's another good example. Now, I think that gets you into, back into the common law test again.
Right.
So, yeah, that's another good example.
Greg, would the common law test get you into the, or address the situation if you're an employee of an entity that has an action in front of the governing body, and you act on that action even though you're not an owner, you don't have a, your financial interest is job security, basically, and the influence of your supervisor, your boss, on you, but not a direct, if you do this, you're going to get $500 or anything like that. Does, would that fit into the common law conflict of interest, or does it escape that, do you believe? Because that's a classic one that we get occasionally, or have had in the past, not often, but, "I'm an employee of the institution, therefore, what does that mean?"
And that, well, that is one of the bases for having a substantial interest, just the employment.
Okay.
With the exception of, and unless it is, in general, a tax-exempt employer.
Okay.
The, so it gets a little complicated there, but, and that's, so, yeah, it, I'm not sure exactly what prompted that coming into the law, but it's there. It wouldn't seem to be distinguishable, but-
These are all common sense rules, and we should, in my opinion, we probably shouldn't even have to do these, but I think we do.
Yeah, the first common sense rule, I would think, is that if you're elected to the governing body, that, and one could argue to any city board or committee that we state that, that is your primary interest, first and foremost. That's the first thing, because if you go into any of these decisions as if you don't know which one reigns, you're going to have a hard time with them. Now, I can't say that a board member would look at it the same way. Certainly, as a commissioner, it's a little bit easier, but that's from an organizational perspective, that's what I would expect, is that we're, we are your priority, and the other interest shouldn't enter in. I think that's the, the way these rules and stuff really want to take it, or the place they want to take it.
And I think furthermore, the common sense rule says, we need to be less concerned about, boy, can I sit up here and vote on this, versus how does it look to the public? I mean, it's not a matter of if you trust me, or I trust you, or you trust all of us, it's, can the, can the public see a decision and not feel like that was, that person shouldn't have been voting on that? I mean, that's, in essence, any conflict of interest rules, I think, try to get to that. It's that sort of cover-all rule that says, nobody, somebody that knows nothing about this particular item, if they were to look at that and think, and see that there's a conflict, then there probably is, and that's sort of the common test for the appearance of a conflict. To an outsider, knowing nothing else about it, would that appear to be a conflict? And so, sometimes it's a common sense thing that I think, and frankly, I've been, I've been in the planning business and so on for 27 years, and have a professional degree in it, so maybe it's, for me, it's common sense, and it's not for everybody else. So I apologize if I'm being a little harsh, but, but it just seems to me that it really is that common sense, that easy, so.
Commissioner, there's a quick, I think, a quick, easy question. Does it make sense to you that wherever you end up on this, and I'm speaking primarily from a land use decision perspective, that all the boards and committees that are involved in land use decision, excuse me, decisions, that you want the rules to be applied equally, whatever those rules are to each, so that those decisions, when they're had by them, are handled in the same consistent way, from that perspective? Does that make sense?
Yes.
In other words, you don't want different rules that you apply versus the Planning Commission, versus the Heritage Commission. Shouldn't make sense that wherever you end up, they're the same?
Same set of rules.
Right.
Two more questions?
Two more questions?
I'm good.
Well, I think the only other thing-
Give you time to percolate on it.
You had brought up before about what do you do in the event that, that it occurs? And I, I think, too, there's a three-tier thing. I think the first one is just make that member aware of it, and then hopefully that'll be, and then if it were to happen a second time there, then I think that that would be grounds for looking at a censure of that board member, and prob, and I would say a three strikes, you're out, rule would definitely not be out of the question. And of course, that rule you will have to apply differently from this board to the other, simply because that third option doesn't exist for this board.
Correct. Are you, as a governing body, are you comfortable with, with that approach as we look at what happens with the boards? Everybody seemed to make sense. You're going to have discretion in applying those, certainly, and it's not going to be an easy, this issue adds up to one or the other. You're just going to have to look at all of them and determine whether it's a violation of whatever your policy is, or whatever that might be, and how important it is, how, what level it is. Is it a level one or a level 10 issue, so?
I may reduce one of your strikes. I think after you've been made aware the first time, you ought to know the second time.
I think so, yeah.
Situation exists, and, oh, yeah, that happened before.
Are you, are you comfortable with the staff legal counsel approach, that initially we do try to serve the member at that level in a preliminary way, but if formality suggests versus, which would be you initiate, or the particular board initiates, a more formal look at it, that we then switch over to the organizational role? We can't really do both too well.
Right.
And then I, one thing I told Greg is that this was staff, and in this case, legal counsel is an extension of staff, but certainly, it gets to the legal interpretation at some point in time, and it's not good to be put in the middle of, well, I started here, but I can't go there, or I got to go here, and I can't go. So if we're just going to do it that way, we need to state it, I think.
Right, and I think to a certain extent, your, your individual boards need to be self-policing in a way, to where all the members ought to be at least aware of potentials and appearances, because if, if it's an appearance to the community, it's going to be an appearance to the people on that board who actually would know a little bit more at that point. So I wouldn't want to put it completely on staff. I would want to encourage the, the individual boards to be more aware, and I think, I think all this process will make things a lot more aware, so enforcement and so on won't be a big thing. The awareness, I think, will take care of most of it. But just that, I think the boards need to be self-policing in a way.
Sure. I don't think there's any question about that. They need to take that responsibility. We, one thing that we would likely do, wherever we end up with this, is if there's any significant changes or even formality to what we do, is go back and do training sessions with the boards, as well as to make sure we incorporate it into the new board member training. With that, if that's enough for tonight, and you want to rest your mind, because there are a few dimensions to this.
That's good.
We'll try to put together some type of a decision grid piece, and look at scheduling study session for next week.
Okay.
If we can't get that, I'll let you know, if we need to move it out, but we'll try to do that.
Sounds good.
Superb. Okay, well, thank you all, and that, I believe, will move us to other business. Do we have any other business? Boy, we don't even have a executive session.
Well, we need to ask you for 15 minutes. Truly, it won't, this won't take long.
Somebody could have made a motion to adjourn within that quick.
Sorry about that.
Come on, people didn't find the opportunity.
Biggest lie around.
We think we might be able to hit it at 10, but I want to be safe, because you're probably going to run to the restroom first.
Okay.
So, how about 15 minutes? It's a short, quick issue. I don't think it'll be difficult, be for legal purposes, I believe.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters, subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 6:35 PM.
Motion to second to recess into executive session for 15 minutes and return at 6:35. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Any business?
Yeah, we do, there is a possibility that you may come out and take action.
There is a possibility that action will be taken in 15 minutes at 6:35, so stay tuned. Okay. It is now 6:35, and we are back in regular session here. And in regard to, we are going to take action, so I will just ask for a motion to authorize staff, if necessary, to file an interpleter for resolution of conflicting claims to the artificial turf currently in the city's possession at the Bicentennial Center.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to the before-mentioned item. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Just real quick, mayor and commissioners, for the public's perspective, that the interpleter is an action in the district court, so just so they know what that is.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Let me just, for procedural purposes, did we need to make a motion to put this item on? Then we can go back and do this, add it to the-
That would, that'd be correct.
Okay, I apologize. I got, I got a little ahead of ourselves.
Well, I was, I was, I was right there with you.
Okay. Okay, so, all right, I would, what, what would this come under? Would this come under just administration, or?
Probably.
Would it matter?
I don't think it matters. I, yeah, if you just get a motion, a second, and a vote to place to add to the agenda, it would be administration, I would think.
Okay, item seven points.
Yeah.
Seven point seven?
An action to consider an interpleter action to be filed in the district court, whatever you want to call it, something like that.
Would you care to make that motion?
Didn't come back, just go ahead. I would go ahead, then, probably go ahead and redo the motion a second again.
Okay, we can do that.
Make it more efficient.
Why don't we go ahead and do, can I get a motion to add seven points?
Mr. Mayor, I would move we add item 7.7 to the administrative agenda, or the, what part were we in?
Administrative.
Administrative agenda, thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second to add item 7.7 to the administration agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0. Now, I will entertain a motion to authorize staff to, if necessary, to file an interpleter for resolution of conflicting claims to the artificial turf currently in the city's possession at the Bicentennial Center.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the before-mentioned item, and if, do we have any further discussion? We see none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. I will take one final motion for the day.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0.